All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome to Harden County Commissioners Court. We're here today for a regular meeting. It's April eighth, twenty twenty-five, and it's ten a.m. All members of the Commissioners Court are present, and this regular meeting is called to order. Everyone will please rise to the indication, which will be delivered this morning by Commissioner Young, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, I want to thank you for today and all of your many blessings. I pray over these students that are here today, be with them and guide them, Lord. Help them to see themselves as you see them, and I pray your hand of protection over them. Be with us today as we conduct the business of the county and keep us in your will. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
Consider the flag of the United States of America and consider the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. We're gonna skip down to item number six on the agenda. Item six is to consider the adoption of Resolution fourteen dash twenty-five congratulating the Coontz Lionettes Girls Basketball Team on their first-ever UIL three A D two state championship victory. Before I ask y'all to come up, Commissioner Young is gonna read the resolution, and then I'd like for all of the girls basketball team and your coach and Dr. Rango, y'all come on up. Commissioner?
Resolution fourteen twenty-five, State of Texas, County of Harden, Commissioners Court of Harden County, Texas. Congratulating the Coontz Lionettes Girls Basketball Team for winning their first-ever UIL class three A D two state championship. Whereas the Coontz Lionettes Girls Basketball Team has demonstrated exceptional talent, determination, and sportsmanship throughout the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five season, culminating in their first-ever UIL class three A Division two state championship victory. And whereas the Lionettes displayed dominance in every phase of the game, defeating the Paradise Lady Panthers sixty-nine to forty in the championship game at the Alamo Dome against San Antonio, Texas on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. And whereas, under the leadership of head coach Tina Matthews, the Lionettes completed a thirty-one to three season record, ending the year on a sixteen-game winning streak with their final six victories, all by more than twenty-five points. And whereas, senior Kiana McDaniel was named the most valuable player of the championship game, finishing with nineteen points and eleven rebounds, while teammates Jakaya Irvin, Neosha McMahon, and Starr Warren contributed significantly to the team's dominant performance. And whereas, the Coontz Lionettes state title marks a historic milestone for the program, joining the storied tradition of Coontz High School Athletics, which has long been known for its excellence in sports. And whereas, this championship serves as an inspiration to the Coontz community, reflecting the dedication, perseverance, and hard work of the players, coaching staff, and supporters who have been instrumental in their success. And now therefore be it resolved that the Harden County Commissioners Court does hereby recognize and commend the Coontz Lionettes Girls Basketball Team for their remarkable achievements and congratulates them on bringing home their twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five UIL class three A D two state championship. And be it therefore resolved that this resolution be entered into the official public records of Harden County and that copies be provided to the team and school as a token of appreciation and pride from the citizens of Harden County, Texas.
Congratulations. Have a motion by Commissioner Young, signed by Commissioner Kirkendall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is adopted, and if the coach and superintendent will come forward and bring any and all the players that you'd like to bring, if there's anything you want to say, we'd love to hear it. And if not, let's at least get some pictures. I see why a couple of y'all are playing basketball. Look how tall y'all are. So who is the MVP?
Oh, she had a field trip today.
Ah, alright.
Would it be all right if the commissioner stood up?
Sure.
One more. One, three, one, two, three.
Alright, congratulations. Does anybody want to say anything? No?
I just want to say thank you. Thank you guys for recognizing these girls' hard work, their undeniable grit, their unwavering tenacity as well.
Yes, ma'am.
I feel standing here today, and we're truly appreciative for you guys recognizing them today.
We're glad to do it. Bravo very much. I was asked why the girls went first. I said, "Girls always go first." And second of all, they won first. That's right. Now, next we'll go to item number seven, which is to consider adoption of Resolution fifteen dash twenty-five congratulating the Coontz Lions Boys Basketball Team on their UIL three A dash D two state championship victory. And Commissioner Kirkendall is gonna present this resolution. Commissioner?
Congratulating the Coontz Lions Boys Basketball Team on their UIL three A Division two state championship victory. Whereas the Coontz Lions Boys Basketball Team has demonstrated exceptional talent, determination, and teamwork throughout the twenty-four, twenty-five season, culminating in their well-earned UIL class three A Division two state championship. And whereas, the Lions showcased a dominant offensive performance throughout the season and the championship game, demonstrating skill, discipline, and sportsmanship that have made their school and community proud. And whereas, the dedication of head coach Duane Jubert, the coaching staff, and the players have been instrumental in the team's success, serving as an inspiration for future generations of student athletes in Harden County. And whereas, senior Zach Sales, who was named the most valuable player of the championship game, finished with twenty-eight points. Great job, kid. While teammates Mason Donald finished with twenty-three points, the other starters Ryan Smart, Cordell Lowe, and Jermaine Warren contributed significantly to the team's dominant performance. And whereas, the team's historic achievement brings great pride to the Coontz community, Harden County, and the entire southeast region, reinforcing the community's strong tradition of athletic excellence. And now therefore be it resolved that the Harden County Commissioners Court does hereby congratulate the Coontz Lions Basketball Team on their twenty-four, twenty-five UL, UIL class three A Division two state championship, and commends the players, coaches, and supporters for their outstanding accomplishment. And be it further resolved that this resolution be entered into the official records of Harden County and that copies be provided to the team and school as a token of appreciation and recognition for their hard work and success. Adopted this eighth day of April, twenty twenty-five, by Harden County Commissioners Court. So look.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, signed by Commissioner Cooper to adopt the resolution as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is adopted, and again, if the coach and superintendent, boy, that's something. So who is MVP of this group? Is he here? Does anybody want to speak?
No, sir, we really appreciate everything, Judge McDaniel. It's truly a blessing to be up here to represent Coontz and what we did this past year. I just like to thank y'all.
We're very proud of y'all. And if y'all want to take pictures, a little more help, y'all go ahead.
Coach, how many wins did you have?
This year, thirty-eight and two.
Thirty-eight and two.
Awesome.
Judge, thanks for letting us do this. Appreciate you.
Thank y'all for letting us do this. We appreciate it. If y'all would like to go back, that's fine, and if you want to stay, that's fine. Either way, whatever you'd like to do. Thank y'all again for coming. Congratulations. Thank y'all again. Thank y'all. Yes, ma'am. Coach, we'll get copies of these over to the school probably tomorrow, about five tomorrow. Alright. We're gonna make copies of the resolution for all the players and take them to the schools. Yeah, once you, you don't have the originals? You didn't keep them?
No, I gave them the original.
Alright. Let's figure that out. Good morning, welcome to Commissioners Court. Sorry we didn't have room for you in the vicinity, but glad y'all made it. Now, we're gonna go back to item number three, which is to consider and possibly approve the minutes of the March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five regular and special meetings presented by the county clerk, county attorney. Have a motion by Commissioner Young, signed by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number four, consider approval of request by Deborah McWilliams, county treasurer, to cancel all registered claims from March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, and approve of today's cash payment as presented. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of a liability of one million, seven hundred fifty-three thousand, eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. On our cash report summary and general checking account, we have six hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars and sixty-four cents. At First Financial Bank, First Financial Bank in Lumberton, of the special money market account, thirty million, seven hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred sixty-three dollars and thirteen cents. In Tech School, three hundred fifty-eight thousand, five hundred eight dollars and seventy-six cents for total in cash funds, thirty-one million, eight hundred thirty-two thousand, nine hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty-three cents.
Let it go. Please say. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, the previous presented, signed by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, sir.
Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am. Item four, that wasn't a, number four. Item five is authorization to pay county bills as presented by Mrs. Angela Gore, county auditor. Good morning, Mrs. Gore.
Good morning. The pre-imperative expenditures from March the twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth, it's three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. Pre-imperative expenditures for April the first to the third is six hundred sixty-three thousand, seventy-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Expenditures for Commissioners Court today are two hundred fourteen thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-two cents. The total expenditures and transfers is one million, two hundred fifty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. Gross payroll for April the third was six hundred fifty-three thousand, eight hundred forty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents, and the total transferred for that payroll was eight hundred and three thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-two cents.
Who's paid the bill?
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cook, signed by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Gore.
Thank you.
Item number eight is to discuss, consider, and possibly approve request by Mr. Aaron Tucker, Emergency Management Coordinator, to issue a notice to proceed on the executed contract with N and T Construction for construction of the hurricane safe room. We have a memo in our package from Mr. Tucker that kind of lays out what the request is here today, and I'll just kind of summarize. We awarded that project, I believe it was back in November, and then y'all authorized me to sign the contract with N and T Construction in December. There's a shortfall in the amount of that award, and that shortfall is one million, six ninety-eight, four oh three eighty-six. The grant administrator is here, Ms. Smith. She had drafted a letter that I submitted to the Texas Division of Emergency Management on January the seventeenth requesting a cost adjustment overrun, and that is for them to add that amount in, that one, six nine eight, four oh three eighty-six, into the, to the project. The reason for the difference is that project was budgeted and put together back in twenty nineteen, if I remember right. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then it's awarded in twenty twenty-four, when the cost of everything has gone so out of, out of sight. I don't think there were any, or if so, there weren't many changes to the design from the original to the final design.
No, sir, there wasn't.
So most of it just has to do with inflation and things such as that. So Ms. Smith is here, if we have any questions about that. And, you know, I think the main issue that we have, like I said, the contractor has asked us to either issue a notice to proceed, or they can't guarantee the bid. And the main issue is whether or not that amount is gonna get approved. If it doesn't, then of course, we would, we would be hard pressed to approve this. But we have some information from TM, and the money originates with FEMA, and so we all know how long all that takes. And it looks like it's going to get approved, but we just don't have a guarantee. So do you want to add anything to what I've bundled around here?
Sure.
Okay.
First of all, I did want to make a note, just, not that it's necessarily relevant, but if you do look at the alignment of the estimate versus the actual cost, actual bid, I just wanted to point out that it's a much lower, like, labor rate that is being requested. It does not appear that the contractor is, you know, inflating anything. And that would be one of the main light items. We would see that happen if that were the case. As far as the approval of the amendment by FEMA, we have about as good as it gets without a formal approval. And we have been told by TM that, you know, it is, it is under review. They did ask for that alignment of costs, which took a minute to kind of drop all the pennies in the correct buckets, but that as soon as we have that in hand and one or two more forms, one of which is about to be in your inbox as soon as this is ever, as soon as the board approves, then we would have that approval in hand. That FEMA headquarters are aware of the necessity of getting this thing efficiently and quickly. And that's about as good as it gets until you get that formal approval in, right? And so, you know, again, there, there's no one hundred percent guarantee until we have that, but it's about, you know, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent when we start hearing that. That means TM has approved the money. It is there and available for use for this project. We're just waiting on boxes to be checked.
So can we approve this with the condition that it gets approved by TM?
If we did that, and they start construction, and then we did not get approval, we would have a slab and some framework up that we don't, I don't know how that would work, is what I guess I would say. If, if for some reason it didn't get approved, and we had already started the project, and we decided to cancel it, then I'm not sure exactly, I'm not sure how that works.
At what point were you made aware of the discrepancy?
We've known from the day that the bid came out.
Has the court been made aware?
I'm not sure if that came up during the bidding process. And I honestly don't recall if I have discussed it.
I mean, it might be my own call, but I, I think this is the first time I've seen this. Am I correct, yeah?
As far as actual numbers, yes. I think we have discussed, though, that the amount of the award was lower than the amount of the, of what it would be nowadays. I mean, we've actually been talking about that on, on calls with several previous TM and FEMA people that we've dealt with over the years. And they've always told us the money would be there to increase it, but we never have gotten anything in writing that says it's approved, and that's what we're looking for.
Worst-case scenario, how would this affect our contentancy?
Well, it would be a good idea to have a plan in place if this does not come through. So I would suggest that y'all would consider using the fund balances for the balance of this construction before the construction is, is taken, is started.
Do we remember the balance right off the top of our head?
I would, no, I do not have that.
It's around ten million. You know, fund it's around ten million.
Y'all would really consider taking this out of our fund balance?
No, I'm just asking a question.
Well, I mean, I think you pretty much have to have a plan in place, you know, before construction starts. And so, the only option would be to take this out of fund balance if it is not approved, would be a suggestion, because y'all do need to know how y'all gonna fund this if you do not get it from FEMA.
So what, how long are we expecting to hear from TM and FEMA?
I, I hate to even predict that. They have made it sound as though it is imminent as soon as we get this to them.
Ninety days?
I would think that, yes, that is reasonable, if not sooner.
Is anybody here from N and T Construction? Hold on, if you don't mind. What's your name, sir?
Charlie Cabbia.
I got, did I get the letter from you?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it was an email, I think.
You're right, it came to Fund Bred, and so thank you for sending that. And I do understand the position that you're in.
Right.
I hope that you can understand the position that we're in here. We're, we're waiting on, on approval.
Right.
Based on what Ms. Smith just said, we may be looking at sixty to ninety days to get this approval. Is there any way that you would allow us that time to, to kind of wait and see what happens there?
Well, you know, we'd like to do the project, obviously. So yes, I mean, I'd like to, I do, I mean, I've contacted my subcontractors, and there have been cost increases already. You know, I'd do whatever I could to absorb that so I could get a project within reason. So, you know, I'd have to see what all of their, you know, cost increases are, because I did send something out after I sent you the letter, see if they could hold their prices. A lot of them said they can hold it for sixty days, but there's been quite a few that said they can't hold the prices. So I'd have to see what those increases are, see if I think I can, you know, absorb that, you know, if it's within reason. So that's kind of where I'm at right now. So, yeah, I would try to, you know, I said try. I would allow you all that time, and you'll try to get as much information as I can from the subcontractors and pricing as soon as possible, to see where I stand, and give you all an update if something changes.
Melinda, what happens if in ninety days, TM says, "We've authorized this amount"? Then we go back to N and T, and we give them a notice to proceed, and they say, "Well, the cost is now going up another whatever that amount is." Are we gonna be able to get that amount from the project? So we'll have to eat that.
Correct. Then, I'm trying to get a good way to explain. So you can't increase a unit price once it's bid. So unfortunately, the choice is either the contractor absorbs it, or you find some other ways sometimes to increase cost, whether it's something that is a, like if there were equipment rental involved or something that you had possibly some delays, you could get that, but overall, you can't increase the unit.
Existing line items that we have.
Correct. And so at that point, you are kind of stuck, and the option would probably be to rebid at that point if the contractor wasn't able to do that.
That's what I was gonna ask. We can rebid, right?
You can, but then we may land right back here in the same situation again if those bids come back higher.
Well, with the way things are going, I don't feel comfortable personally bidding something or approving something we don't have the funds for. So that's why I'm at today. And if we have to rebid, we have to rebid, and ultimately cancel the contract. And then whatever we gotta do, I don't know that the citizens would be comfortable with the stock market doing what it's doing, with grants being cut. I don't know that our citizens would be comfortable for us approving something that's that, that high, one point six million, and then having taxpayers have to pay that other share. So is there a way that we can table this for sixty days, eighty days? Well, I'm gonna say maybe thirty days, and let's come back and get an update in thirty days. The first meeting in, in May, let's see where we are, what we've heard since then, and at least let you know that we're staying on top of this, and we're watching it, and keep you updated as well. Does that sound good to everybody?
Second.
Second.
Have we, I'm sorry. Have we, have you received any money from us on this?
No.
Great. Architector work.
Under the nine, yeah. That was in first.
So, so I don't know who to ask this question to, the auditor, the judge, yourself, but somebody might can answer it. If this project does not go through, for, for whatever reason, we already paid LaBeach Architect, and I'm not sure who else, but I know LaBeach for sure. Will we have to reimburse that money if we don't use anything, any funds from this grant? Or those, those funds that we've already used, they're good, even if we don't go through this project?
It was a phase project. So the phase one amount is what has been paid, and that is your engineering and architectural fees. No expenses have been technically incurred or reported on phase two. So the county has not been out any funds at this point, and of course, that would be a finer approval as well if, if that did come up. And I am unable to bill until someone else does. So you know you're not getting to bill for me. The architect is in a similar position as far as his phase one deliverables did include the bid documents. So until the contractor starts work, you'll really at risk for any, any kind of fees being incurred.
I would hope that, that we're able to do this, because it is, it is a good deal. Why, why has it been so long? Why?
So the previous administrators' documents that were provided to the county did not align with anything that was either in the file that I had in my hands or that I could actually pull off of the GMS portal. So there was some back and forth trying to get that. And, and some gaps around Christmas and things where nobody really responded to some requests. The last time I asked for things, I copied several people, and I actually got it that next day. So in retrospect, I wish I had requested it from more people earlier on, but we did get it that next day. Everybody in the office, staff here, worked on getting it. And the contractor did a great job of getting that right back to us as well so that we could be here today with that information and, and kind of tentative approval from the agency.
Now, what she's talking about is the length of time between November and now. Were you asking about why it's taken so long, years to get from the start of this to now?
Yeah, and I assume that's the timeframe that these materials or whatever have went up in price and...
Yeah, most, most of that is government red tape, but not all of it.
Have, there was a three hundred something thousand dollar match on this project, correct, Ms. Gore? I don't know on that.
So twenty-five percent match, is that right? And then S B seven covers.
As it's based, sir.
Yeah.
Does that come out of our budget yet?
No. We budgeted for it, but it's not. Nothing's been spent in phase two yet. Soon, if we were just to cancel this project at any given time, that we're probably gonna get some bill from LaBeach for the work they've done to get the bid documents and the bidding done. It would probably be minimal, but otherwise, we have no expenses yet.
I, I was yacking like I always am whenever you said, "What we're gonna do today," what'd you say?
Have a motion and a second to table it, and we'll bring it back up to the first meeting in May to get, see where we're standing.
And if this project goes through, I assume that's what we're waiting on by table?
We're waiting on authorization from TM and FEMA to authorize the overage, the one point seven, almost one point seven million.
What would be, what would be your recommendation if they don't?
It'd be tough. It'd be a tough call. I mean, the total project is how much?
Including the non-FEMA portion, five point three two two.
Would we be able to cut anything out of the design and rebid it? Is there anything that we could get rid of to lower the price if we have to rebid?
I'm not sure that, I mean, that is more of a question regarding, but I'm not sure that the FEMA-funded portion has a lot of play for it, because there are certain standards that have to be met when constructing a community safe room, which is what this is. But I'm all of it at some point.
We could possibly downsize it if we needed to. Is that something we could do?
Yes, sir, I would work out. I'll get with Aaron and see what any requirements to do some value engineering so it can be done to, to reduce some of those costs, but still keep it in the guidelines of what FEMA did require for safe room.
And what does that consist of when you say the value of engineering?
Value engineering, look at ways to reduce the cost, but still maintain the integrity of the building, because FEMA has certain requirements for a safe room that have to be met. But there, we may be able to downsize, lower the square footage, if that's a possibility.
And it should still meet the BCA, which is, you know, one of the requirements.
What does BCA say?
The Benefit Cost Analysis. I will say if we downsize from the plans that we have submitted, we will have to submit those to FEMA for review again. We can't change what they've approved without their approval again. The BCA itself is calculated using the number of occupants that we are assuming would be using the facility. That being said, the primary issue that you see with that BCA is when your replacement value is not, sorry, not replacement value, there's another recording. sorry, not replacement value, uh, there's another report, um, when your, whatever cost this is, is going up is more of an issue, when you're going down, it's generally not. We do have to make sure that we are maintaining the use that we said we were willing to have it for and, um, take a look at that, that occupancy rate, just to be sure we keep with it, I don't think it'd be a problem, but.
And the main reason we're here today is so they could start the project based on pricing? Is that why, is that why we're, I'm not, I know we're not in a rush, but it seems like we're rushing it?
Hmm, well, I mean, it's, you know, did bid in November and we got a contract in December, so it's been a long time since, you know, we've had the contract, but, uh, uh, yeah, we was hoping to get a notice to proceed, you know, I mean, I don't know all the gyrations y'all gotta go through with FEMA or TDM, but, you know, we were hoping to get a, you know, notice to proceed so we could start and, you know, the longer you wait, the more the possible, so that's, you know, one of the reasons you wanna get a notice to proceed. But again, you know, I wanna do the project, I'm willing to probably absorb some costs within reason, so, I mean, if y'all wanna wait until May, the next meeting, to see if you've heard from, uh, TDM and FEMA and the plan is there and then you can issue numbers for seeing, you know, we're willing to, you'll see where we stand at that particular point in time.
This is not, uh, pointed at anybody that's here, but this seems to be an, uh, a popular, uh,
Delay?
Route that we go through every time we deal with the federal government. And, uh, it's making us look bad, so.
One of the.
I certainly understand where you're coming from, we have a contract with you and you're ready to go and.
One of the things that happens is there's a turnover, constant turnover at FEMA and any of the federal people that we deal with. I really have said this many times before, I think that's done by design, to get people to a point like we are now and it kind of discourages you from using that money. And it's just, this is just another, for instance, of that.
Yeah, I will say on that point with the turnover, we did find out, um, along the way with all of these delays that we've had, um, when an employee leaves TDM, their emails are shut down, they're not forwarded to anyone. So if someone has information in their inbox that they never did put into the portal, it's pretty much lost forever. So we get a lot of requests that are for us to do the same work over and over and over again, sometimes for even four times. Um, and that's a big part of the delays that we're seeing from this grant program in particular. And as far as the, the cuts that we're seeing in federal funding, so far, I'm, this is not one of those programs, a lot of what you're seeing that we call it, you know, it's a verb, um, are things that had some scoring criteria tied to, um, demographics, um, social vulnerability, um, some justice forty initiatives from the Biden and Harris administration. Pretty much those programs like Brick and things that had that tied to are what we're seeing get canceled. And there's not really been any discussion that I'm aware of, um, and we do pay attention to that with HMGP, at least not to this point. Um, even if FEMA is dissolved or removed from administration, responsibilities of this program is our understanding from various emergency managers and things that attend all the conferences, that the money would just be allocated to the state, it's already in a shared account between FEMA and TDM. And it would just eliminate kind of that middleman and have TDM be the say of when the checks get written.
You're always prepared.
Thank you, I try.
I still think this, uh, project is a great benefit to the county, especially now that we are in the middle of tearing down the hospital. Um, and even at what it is, it's still a third of the price that we will pay out of pocket to build it on our own. So hopefully FEMA will come through, um, but I, I still, even at one point seven million, it is still a benefit to the county. It's just bad timing.
It, it is definitely, and I agree with you, Commissioner Young, it's definitely a benefit, but that, if this court took action to take that out of our contingency, when we have so many drainage problems and other problems, I'm not putting that one point seven billion dollars toward that, none of us would survive as elected officials, I guarantee you, so.
I agree.
Anyway, thank you, Bill.
Thank you all, so we have the, uh, motion in second to table, motion was by Commissioner Cook and saving it by Kirkendall, is that correct? Any other discussion?
It was in thirty days.
Yeah, we'll bring it back up to the first meeting in May, yes, sir. Anything further?
Question, so if y'all do all the, on this, um, I'm going to send the documentation to TDM and your head and tell them that they, that y'all had to table it? And that there kind of reason why?
Yeah, maybe that's.
Okay, maybe that was me being exact, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Anything else? All in favor of table?
Aye.
Any opposed? They haven't tabled until the second Tuesday in, uh, May, I mean, thank you all very much.
Alright, thank you.
Item number nine, consider a possible approval amendments to the fiscal year twenty-four budget as presented by Mrs. Candace McKenney, Assistant County Auditor, until Monday. Good morning, Mr. McKen.
Good morning.
This all has to do with the, uh, audit that you're working on?
Yes, sir, these are mostly cleanup entries that we're having to do, um, to finalize everything for twenty-four.
Are you able to summarize this instead of reading this line?
I'm gonna do my best.
Alright.
So the first, uh, section you see is going to be a, um, increase to revenue line item oh one oh three seven two oh oh miscellaneous, moving that revenue to a newly created line item land lease oh one oh three seven oh two oh one in the amount of forty-five hundred dollars. That is to accommodate the, uh, accounting for the lease on Farmer Street. Also, um, creating the line item in the floodplain office dues and subscriptions oh one oh four oh nine three ninety in the amount of one hundred dollars and transferring that expense from travel and training oh one oh four oh nine four two six. The next segment is going to be a reclass of salary related items in the building maintenance department, moving salaries part-time. Fund oh one oh five ten one oh seven to salaries custodians oh one oh five ten four one five eight eight seven oh one. Eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eleven cents, excuse me. The next budget amendment, in order to dissolve the alternative dispute resolution fund, we need to, um, do some cleanup there and in order to do that, we wanted to create line item oh two four four one two four nine one state fees in the amount of fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twelve cents. And offsetting that by increasing or adjusting the twenty-four revenue line items to align with the actual collections for the twenty-four year and that total was two thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty cents. And also transferring all of the budgeted expenses to this new created line item and those totaled twenty thousand dollars. The other offset would be the fund balance, the accumulated fund balance would have utilized that, the accumulated fund balance was thirty-six thousand ninety dollars and ninety-two cents. So the next three section, the next three sections that you see, um, are to record the financing leases that we entered into in twenty-four. Um, that was for equipment that we financed for the road bridge two, road bridge three, and road bridge four. We are wanting to create a revenue line item capital lease proceeds oh one seven three hundred seven hundred and offset that by the expenditure line item capital outlay from lease and each of the respective London departments. Road bridge two, the dollar amount was a hundred and nine thousand five hundred dollars, road bridge three, the dollar amount was a hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars. And the road bridge four department was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars. The total of all three of those was four hundred and fifty thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars. The next four you see is going to be new requirements that we have, um, had to do or has been issued from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, Gatsby eighty-seven standard. We are going to need to create a revenue and expense line item in the respective funds and departments. For, and those line items would be, for those respective funds and departments, the last three digit would be seven oh two, the expense would be capital outlay operating lease and the offset would be a revenue line item lease proceeds operating lease, so it would be basically our increase in revenue and expense washout. For the, um, and we had four new leases, those are the entries that would need to be created there in the DA office, Jacob three office, Agralife office, and road bridge two office. In the DA's office with the dollar amount was four thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-two cents, the JP three office, three thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. The Agralife office, eight thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-nine cents, the road bridge two office, three thousand forty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. The rest of the entries that you see with the exception of one, which is on page two, I'll go over after this, but these are all, um, also Gatsby eighty-seven standard, uh, standards that we have to make adjustments for. And what we are requesting to do is create a principal lease equipment account, six thirty-one in the respective fund and offices that have, uh, leases and moving those funds from the existing expense account four sixty-two, which is office equipment rentals. And the following offices have those on them, for the county clerk's office, four thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. For the three hundred and fifty-six district judge office, one thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars, the district clerk's office, two thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars, the JP two office, eight hundred and seven dollars, the JP three office, five hundred and seventy-two dollars, the JP four office, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. County attorney office, one thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars, the district attorney office, two thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars. County treasurer office, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars, the tax office, two thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. Purchasing office, seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars, the sheriff's office, one thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars, the jail, one thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. Juvenile detention, one thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and I'm gonna skip the next one. One after that was the Agralife office, four hundred and nine dollars, road bridge two office, one hundred and forty-nine dollars, jury county court office, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. So we have another line item, um, that is a lease, it's a different type of lease, it's a rental and so in this case, we would need to, um, create a principal lease building line item oh one oh six fifty-six thirty offset by the, um, moving funds from the rental expense oh one oh six fifty-four sixty in the amount of ten thousand six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and lease interest expense oh one oh six fifty-six seventy-two in the amount of one hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Thank you for this, can you run it?
Say. We have a motion by Commissioner Miller, said goodbye Commissioner Cooper, any discussion?
Candace, all these are recommended by our outside auditor.
Um, well, yes and no, uh, these are just a cleanup that we are having to do internally in order to, um, comply.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. McKen. You're, you're not done, but. Number ten, consider approval request by Mrs. McKenney to amend the fiscal year twenty-five facility improvement and general fund budget for parking lot construction previously approved in Commissioners Court on November twenty-six, twenty twenty-four as follows. Decrease the general fund balance by five hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred dollars, increase expenditure in oh one oh seven hundred oh seven one in the amount of five hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. Increase revenue zero seven one three nine zero zero one zero by the same amount and then increase expenditure and create a new line item zero one seven five one zero five five zero, construction cost in the same amount, five hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred dollars.
This is just to move the funds that were approved again on November twenty-six for the construction of the parking lot. And that was the dollar amount that action of the court took during that time and so we were just creating the line items to make that happen.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, said goodbye Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you again.
Yeah, before you get to, uh, number eleven, I would like to, uh, recuse myself from any, uh, discussion or actions.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. On number eleven, consider approval of request by the Honorable Dana Hall, District Clerk to approve and accept for filing in the minutes of the court, the district court order appointing the interim county auditor effective April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five and directing payment of the interim county auditor's salary at seventy-eight thousand one hundred dollars per year or three thousand three dollars eighty-one cents per pay period and sixty-nine dollars twenty-three cents longevity pay to be paid biweekly. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, said goodbye Commissioner Cook and that is for the interim county auditor appointment effective April fourteenth and that would be Mrs. Candace McKenney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four to zero and just note on the record, Mrs. Beckton, that Commissioner Cooper recused himself, thank you. Item twelve, consider approval of request by Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer, to open a new interest-bearing bank account titled Tac Motor dash Web Dealer for the Tax Assessor's Collector's Office at First Financial Bank.
Yes, sir, Steve, Mr. Smith came to me and requested, um, this new account. If you need more information, I think he can explain why he feels like we need a new one.
Sure.
Morning.
Morning.
Pardon me, by and off the cold, um, what is this, they's having us move from online and, uh, automated system and we're going away from the dealer provides little checks, we're gonna use ACH payments, we don't want those payments going directly into the banking accounts we have now. We're adding this additional account so that those direct deposits from the dealers can go directly into this account and remain segregated from the rest of our, our banking. And then, uh, if there's not gonna be any deposit slips, no checks involved, there's three signers, interest-bearing account, I've spoken with both Ms., uh, Ms. Debbie and Ms. Angela, they seem to be in agreement with it, we're hoping that the court will see fit to, to allow this additional.
Certainly. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, said goodbye Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Steve.
Thank you all very much.
Item thirteen, consider approval of request by Mrs. McWilliams, County Treasurer, to change the authorized signer from Angela Gore to Candace McKenney on all the bank accounts as applicable. Okay.
Certainly.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, said goodbye Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. It's good and real, ain't it?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you. Number fourteen, consider and possibly authorize the county judge to execute State of Texas House of Representatives donated office space agreement between Hardin County and State Representative Janice Holt, House District eighteen, beginning April eighth, twenty twenty-five and ending January eleventh, twenty twenty-seven. This will be the same space that, uh, Representative Vales had before over around from the, uh, purchasing office. Have a motion by Commissioner Young, said goodbye Commissioner Cook, any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Do we know if they're going to put someone in this full time?
I, uh, specifically asked Mrs. Holt that she would make sure somebody was here often and she says her intention to have somebody there three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday is what I believe the, uh, plan is, is Ally here or somebody? You're Ms., uh, Hancock. Ms. Hancock.
Ms. Hancock.
Yep, is that correct?
That is correct, I'll be, um, her representative for the office. I know we agreed on two days, Tuesday and Wednesday, and she said that we'd probably go up to three, so I will be responsible, that's one thing that we wanted. Uh, we don't want an empty office, we want an office that, uh, people always feel they have a voice, someone there to hear them. So I will be, I will be there in that office.
You'll get that, go ahead.
You know, unless I've got to be called out to it again and all that, but I will try to arrange all of that around that office time.
It was really discouraging that we had an office, but no representation for that office in there. And if we're, if we're just going to have a space.
I agree.
There's plenty of common space that people can sign up for to have meetings. But the citizens did not feel served by having, uh, an office with an name on the door and no one in there to go sit.
I agree, and I think that will be even more important being that this is, uh, Representative Holt's, uh, home area. I think it, it would be even, uh, more offensive to have just an empty office space, so I agree with that totally.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fifteen, consider approval request by Mrs. Katie Pace, Agralife Extension Agent, to amend the fiscal year twenty-five budget to cover the cost of upgrading office computers utilizing Texas A and M's. to cover the cost of upgrading office computers utilizing Texas A and M's Tech Buy County Cost Share Program as follows. Two thousand two hundred and seventy five dollars to be transferred from the travel and training expense to uh create a new line item zero one zero six six five three five two. Minor equipment.
Similar. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saying goodbye Commissioner Cook. Any discussion?
Katie, apologize to turn off your.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate you being here, Sandra.
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item sixteen, consider and possibly approve request of Mrs. Misty Sims' purchasing agent to represent, I'm sorry, to present results of being received and recommendation from LJA Engineering concerning Community Development Block Grant, Disaster Recovery, Harvey Infrastructure Saratoga Road Improvement Construction Project. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. This was received on March twenty seventh, twenty twenty five here in the official support room. Uh, the project was being such a matter that the county can award based on what combination of packages best fits. And Saratoga Road project has a remaining construction budget of one million four hundred and sixty nine thousand nine hundred and ninety five dollars and thirteen cents. So to remain in that budget, um, we'll need to award bid packages one, two, and four according to the bid tabulation on the next page. So we received five bids. The first one from East Tex, eh, East Tex Utility Construction for one million four hundred and ninety, I'm sorry. This is only for bid packages one, two, and four. The tabulation on the mail, by the way. So East Tex Utility was one million nine hundred and forty five thousand forty dollars and five cents. Texas Materials Group, one million four hundred and forty one thousand one hundred and ninety five dollars. Mason Construction, one million eight hundred and eighty thousand five hundred and fifty four dollars and ninety five cents. Alco, one million two, nine hundred and twenty three thousand one hundred and two dollars and eighty one cents. And Elite Contractors, one million six hundred and thirty thousand six hundred and fifty nine dollars. Um, Mr. Cole is here with LJA and their recommendation is to go with Texas Materials. He's the low bidder.
Commissioner Young?
Yes, I'm moved to approve uh Texas Materials and to only do bid package one, two, and four.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion?
You say one, two, and four?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Coach. We appreciate you. Anything you wanna add?
No, sir.
Alright. Number seventeen, present recommendation from an evaluation committee concerning proposals received to provide grant administration services relating to the remaining GLO Community Development Block Grant, Disaster Recovery, Harvey Infrastructure Projects, and possibly award to successful firm, our firm. Mrs. Sims?
Proposals were received on March twentieth, twenty twenty five in the purchasing department. Myself, Stacy Eckert, and Pop Roy at were present. We received two from Trailer and Associates and from Impact Strategic Consulting. The evaluation committee was Commissioner Young, Aaron Tupper, and Clay Woodward, and we met last week with them. Their recommendation is to award Trailer and Associates.
Can they do it?
We're happy to do it.
Similar. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saying goodbye Commissioner Cook. I just wanna say that uh this is picking up where somebody else left off. You've already done that once before. You kind of alluded to that here up at the uh podium earlier. So this is gonna be a similar situation and you knew that going in. So thank you for submitting that proposal. We appreciate that. And uh, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eighteen, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims to authorize the county judge to execute change order number one with LZ Services LLC relating to the parking lot improvements and authorized payment of invoice number two five dash one five seven three to LZ Services LLC in the amount of one hundred and thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty six dollars and forty five cents. That change order amount is ten thousand eight hundred dollars. That was for uh, the uh ground was pumping over there. They had to uh remove additional soil down two feet and then backfill with uh, and compact it with select fill material. And then there's some existing utility boxes over there that were not uh built or were not meant to withstand the uh load of traffic uh driving or parking on those. So they recommended uh installing some concrete around those boxes and then a three-quarter inch road plate on top of them. And that total amount comes to uh the six thousand for the road pumping and forty eight hundred for those uh revisions to those utility boxes.
So the total, the total increase is ten thousand eight hundred.
Yes, sir.
Similar.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saying goodbye Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
What completion of that? What are the completion?
Uh, they're supposed to pay this Thursday and strike it Friday as long as it's dry enough, and it should be. Yes, I agree. Number nineteen, consider approval of request by Sheriff Davis to authorize the county judge to execute amendment number five to end local cooperation contract with Spindel Top Center for Mental Health Liaison Program. This is due to additional grant funding for the purchase of a two thousand twenty four Ford Expedition SSV previously, uh previously approved in Commissioners' Court on March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
Similar. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cook, saying goodbye Commissioner Young. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty, discussion on any other non-agenda item without taking action, including announcements which may give interest to the public. Probably get in trouble for this, but I'm gonna do it anyway. Mrs. Gore, I just wanna tell you how much we appreciate your twelve plus years of service for the county. Uh, ten years of that as auditor, maybe a little over ten, is that right?
Eleven.
Eleven years as the auditor. Before that, you were the assistant auditor. You've done a great job for Harden County and for the citizens of Harden County. And I know you didn't wanna make a big deal of this, but uh please uh enjoy your well-deserved retirement and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I'd like to echo that. You know, when you transitioned in, you had to reconcile two different books that the previous auditor uh had. And that was not an easy task. And uh, you caught a lot of contention from him uh once he was not removed. And uh, you handled that with dignity and grace. And you got us to where we needed to be. Those first, I don't know if it was three or four years that you came on was very difficult. And uh, I appreciate how you handled it.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Alright, any other uh announcements or discussion items that anybody wants to bring up?
Move adjourned. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to adjourn, saying goodbye Commissioner Cooper. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.